Meetings now called to order. Let the record show there was no parties from the public. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm not used to seconding in this, but I will second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Davis. Hold on, purchase order. I'm sorry.
He's already contributed.
No, we're good, we're good. Are there any questions for Tracy on the purchase order?
As the council is aware, this will be our last purchase order for the current fiscal year. We typically suspend purchase orders for the last two weeks so that finance working with, with Tracy can get all the general ledger adjustments done for the current fiscal year to close out this year. And since July 1st falls on Saturday, and we have two holidays thrown in there. They'll need the next eight or nine days, eight or nine business days to get everything prepared. So, and everything is called up based on what we have, right? So, everything should be good.
Next on the agenda is Mr. Davis with the internal budget revisions.
Yes, sir. I have seven internal budget revision requests for the council's consideration. The first, as you can see, comes from me for your account 401, which is the county council account. I'm requesting that we reduce line 223 professional services by $10,000. Current unencumbered fund balance is $53,645.2 with 80.2% spent to date. An increased line 214 travel by $3,000. That account currently has a deficit balance of $162.78. An increased line 220 advertising publications by $7,000. That account currently has a deficit balance of $1,459.5. Unfortunately, we've had a lot of public hearings the past couple of months. So, we've had to infuse our advertising publications budget. That should be well forward above what we need to finish out the next two weeks. The next account request is for another one of your accounts, account 424 courthouse. As you know, the courthouse account is the catch-all account in which we pay most of the general expenses for county buildings and fuel for the fleet and things like that. I'm requesting that we decrease line 226 insurance and budgets. Sorry, insurance and bonds by $160,000. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $213,703.50. An increased line 216 maintenance repair equipment by $10,000. Current unencumbered fund balance is $9,091.1. Increase line 221 training and education by $30,000. That account currently has a deficit balance of $26,220. Increase line 240 refunds and reimbursements by $75,000. That account currently has a deficit balance of $64,619. An increased line 343 auto supplies by $45,000. That account currently has a deficit balance of $7,125.25. The first three line items, 216, 221, and 240, they have deficit balances because that's the accounts that I use for our pass-through. So, for example, if we have grants that we have to pay upfront and get reimbursed, those are the accounts that I've been using for that. The 343 account auto supplies, that's what we pay our fuel fleet from. This is the first time in recent memory that our fuel costs have actually exceeded budget slightly, but not enough to throw it into a deficit balance. We had budgeted $350,000 for fuel this year. We've actually exceeded that. But we all know that the cost of fuels will much exceed it. The next five requests all come from the Honorable Sheriff Harmon. And they all involve account 700 sheriff's department, and they're all to correct deficit balances. In the first request, Sheriff Harmon's requesting that he reduce line 341 supplies and materials by $8,340.41. Current unencumbered fund balance is $55,011.24 with 82.6% spent to date. An increased line 214 travel by $8,341. That account currently has a deficit balance of $8,287.81. The next request from Sheriff Harmon again is to reduce line 341 supplies and materials with the previous state or with the previous internal budget revision. That will leave an unencumbered fund balance of $46,670.24. An increased line 216 maintenance and repair equipment by $38,258. That account currently has a deficit balance of $38,257.25. The next request from Sheriff Harmon again is to decrease line 341 supplies and materials by $593. The new unencumbered fund balance in that account will be $8,412.24. An increase line 218 postage by $593. That account currently has a deficit balance of $592.3. The next request from Sheriff Harmon is to decrease line 341 supplies and materials by $1,394. New unencumbered fund balance will be $7,819.24. An increase line 223 professional services by $1,394. That account currently has an unencumbered, a deficit balance of $1,393.15. And then the final request from Sheriff Harmon is to decrease line 341 supplies and materials by $1,475. The new unencumbered fund balance will be $6,425.24. An increase line 230 contractual services by $1,475. Current unencumbered fund balance is $1,390.30. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
There is a change of status. Have a letter of resignation from Francesca Domenico as a telecommunicator. That was effective June 8, 2023. Need the approval of the minutes for June 1, 2023. Everyone was present?
Mr. President, I have a change to the minutes.
Okay, sir.
I'm not sure where we did here. At the, where Tim Zia, Community Corrections Director, gave the update on the catalyst program. Just before that, I disintended the meeting. I left the meeting, and Penny didn't have that. And then, so therefore she had me making a motion of recess. And she said HD made the action, made the motion. HD made the motion of recess. I left the meeting at, before Tim Zia thing. She has since corrected it.
Okay. A motion, motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Tim move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Thank you. Council calendar. Obviously, we're here today. Next Monday, the offices will be closed Monday and Tuesday for Juneteenth and West Virginia Day. And on the 21st, the meeting dates have been changed for the sewer district at 5 o'clock, stormwater at 6, and planning at 6. And the analyst authority will be on the 22nd at 5 o'clock. And let's see, I just want to make note for whoever wants to mark their calendars that we do have the public hearing scheduled for the 13th for the subdivision ordinance of July. The 13th of July for the subdivision ordinance.
Yeah, the health board was not, it's not Monday, it was previous, maybe it was on the 12th.
All right, need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There was no corrections or assessments sent over by the assessor this week. So, I guess that's a good thing that there was apparently no mistakes that needed to be created or fixed. Mr. Barnhart, are you prepared for your board meeting report?
Well, yes, sir, I am. The Board of Health was previous Monday, it was a Zoom meeting. And all they did was staff reports. The environmental section is busy, nursing section's busy, I mean, everybody's busy. So, that was pretty much a routine meeting with Zooms, and it was handled that way. But I also had a Region 9 Planning and Development Council meeting Monday at the airport. They have a new staff member, Chad Holmes, he's a nonprofit project manager. They approved the budget. They discussed another representative to the local government advisory committee, which I'm the current member. They wanted the local government advisory committee to the Chesapeake Bay wants to have a second West Virginia resident. If either of you two are interested, contact Rachel. They didn't decide on anybody yet. They just informed the council. The next meeting is sometime in September in Shutterstown. Of course, they, their meetings are scattered all over the Chesapeake Bay drainage basin. Could be Tacoma, it's been Tacoma Park, DC. Could be Tacoma, it's been Tacoma Park, DC, up in Pennsylvania on the Shana, on the Susquehanna, Harrisonburg, you know, Delaware. It can go anywhere. And then they had staff reports, and we've got on June thirtieth, I think, we've got a meeting in Berkeley Springs, if you all want to attend, on the water improvements, the stormwater improvements in Berkeley Springs. And that includes Region Eight and Region Nine. And that's for me.
Would that address the flooding that they had there several years ago? Mr. Kevin?
The board meeting I had was Monday night to farm land protection. It seems like they're very pleased with the hiring of Risa. I think she's going to be a good fit for that board.
Has she started?
She has, so she could work with Martin, you know, and she had some men put into the meeting, and they seem very pleased with her. Mark Chivani is retiring at the end of June. They're having on Wednesday, July the twelfth. If you haven't gotten an email yet about that, you should get. Sixteen at the Butler Fund, they're going to have a little retirement get-together for him. I think he'd been there like eight and a half years now.
I did. You replaced Bob White, I assume.
Eight and a half years, and I think during his tenure, they said it is, there's been four thousand acres plus. And right now that we're at eighty-six hundred acres in Berkeley County as far as farmland protection.
And it's getting tougher every year to meet all the qualifications, the paperwork and all that.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, but they've had plenty of applicants and all, so, you know, like there's not people willing to submit their farms to this.
That's a good thing.
Now you think about it, the Berkeley County has two hundred and five thousand acres in Berkeley County. Of course, it's not all agriculture, obviously, so, but so the percentage of, you know, it's less than five, I mean, less than a half percent. But they, but if you look at agriculture, the percentage, the percentage is increasing dramatically, so. So anyway, that's it. That's the only meeting that I had this week.
Very good. Thank you. I had LAPC meeting this week. There's not a whole lot going on there. They just finished one of their exercises that they had in ransom last month. The biggest thing is the, the school safety committee, the subcommittee that the sheriff is the chairman of. We met and after the LAPC meeting, and just as a point is, the sheriff is working on building a full-scale exercise to work with our school system and to hone their skills. But he's involved all the police agencies and, you know, really bringing very inclusive, bringing law enforcement, fire, EMS. Everybody has a role in this event, so Sheriff, unless you want to speak about that in a little bit more depth, certainly welcome to.
Yeah, so I appreciate you inviting me up. The exercise is July twenty-seventh. It'll be in the southern part of the county, and we have invited our brother agencies across state lines to accept it. So we're, we know if we have an event or match as a event, that we're going to get the help, whether we like it or not, from our partners across the state line. So we want to include them. We want to see, you know, what kind of mutual aid agreements we need to come, we need to come to agreements on. And so, prosecuting attorney's office, the school board, council members, everybody's invited to observe. EMS and fire department have a piece on that day in the morning. It'll be then a law enforcement repetition style version until lunch. And then after lunch, around one-thirty to three-thirty, we are actually going in the classrooms for our educators to help our principals and assistant principals. The unique thing about this is, you know, it's coming together seamlessly. The school board is working very cooperatively with us, and they volunteered fifteen, thirty-one role players for us. And they're all principals and assistant principals. So they get a look at responses, and then also they also get some training in their own classroom environment. So it's going to be a pretty, pretty good.
It sounded like it's, like I said, very inclusive, and I thank you for taking a leadership role in preparing all these different agencies to what it may look like and be able to work out issues that you see ahead of time. So thanks for your leadership.
Thanks, sir.
Hang on a minute, and I attended that meeting as well, and my curiosity was in the realm of this thing that the governor created, these regional school safety people. And you want to expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, the regional safety represented for our region is Kevin Plummer, retired trooper. He has been, he has made his rounds around our county, done threat assessments. He is tasked to do threat assessments and report those threat assessments to Charles and to Department of Homeland Security. I have seen him as recent as last night, and we had discussion, he's going to be at the next school safety subcommittee meeting, I think, July tenth, and we want to incorporate his information. But keep in mind, he's not focused just primarily on Berkeley County. He's got ninety-two schools that he does, so he does the whole region. So he's pulled many directions, but we want to make sure that he's at least a part of our school safety.
Thank you. The other thing, I had a development authority meeting yesterday, and we still have, we still have industry and different commercial entities looking here. Actually, CMC hopefully will be closing on their sale of their property today. The Tiff District application should be completed next week. And then after that, I'm assuming that it will come to council, and then once it's approved, then it'll be sent to the state for approval. So that kind of rounds out my meetings as well. On the board and commission vacancies, does anybody wish to make any appointments? I think on the board and zoning committee. Yes, sir.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, I would, please.
Make a motion that we appoint Scott McAvoy to the board, Berkeley County Board of Zoning Appeals.
Is that for a full term?
Yes, sir.
Do you know how long that term is?
I don't.
Oh, okay, thank you. Second.
Yeah, thank you. I tell you, Scott has been very involved in that zoning area, in that neighborhood in particular. And like I mentioned last week, he seems to be highly respected amongst his neighbors, you know, when he speaks. He speaks very well, so.
Yeah, I've tried to put the bug in his ear and like, let's work on expanding the zoning area of Tuscaloosa because, you know, only half of Chateaugay is in it. It'd be nice to do at least all of Chateaugay, just to.
Yeah, because they all have the same interest.
Is that a simple decision of the HOA there, or do they have to go through council?
Well, I imagine.
I'm not sure of the process.
But they would have to agree to it first?
They would have to go through the council and amending the zoning requirements. You took actions to enact it.
It would be a process. There was some discussion a couple of years ago about that. HOA presidents were wanting to get together, and nothing really came of it.
My, my question is this, Anthony. Obviously, to have countywide zoning, we'd have to go before the voters, and Berkeley County has several times in the past. And but if we wanted to do specialized zoning in other places, what do you, what's the requirement, Sarah?
Well, I don't have it right in front of me, but I don't think you have to go before the voters for certainly publication requirements.
Public hearings and all of that, but there's nothing that requires. One of the ways to do it, but before the voters, that's how it's been done before.
That's county, that's county-wide, but even spot zoning?
Even spot zoning, you could do it by vote, but here.
Yeah, we did before the airport. We did not for the airport.
Yeah, you don't need, you don't need to have it go out. We have the three zoned areas, the window wall, Tuscaloosa, airports. Airports certainly for a different purpose than the other two. It would just be this body making the final decision, but I think the idea for Tuscaloosa would be the residents in that area coming forward with a plan, rather than the council saying, well, here's our plan. You guys, you guys okay with it? The HOA presidents were, said they were going to have a meeting and try to figure out a better shape for the area because it cuts right through properties, I think you weren't here, but my father-in-law's property. It cuts right through their backyard, so their house isn't in it, but why that shape was drawn the way it was, it was all farmland back then. Interstate was coming in, there's at about the same time, and they wanted to check that area for certain factors. I think it's, I think there, if the council wants to go forward with something like that, there should probably be some sort of subcommittee put together, council member representative, talk with the folks in that area and see what they want. And maybe have the zoning ordinance better aligned with the subdivision ordinance because the subdivision ordinance regulates a lot of things as well, setbacks. That does, sometimes subdivision ordinance affects even more strict, so. It'll be up to the council if we have further discussion.
Thank you. The next issue is the Nests' Quarry Road complaints. I don't think we can complete that in two and a half minutes. I'd like to go ahead with our ten o'clock bid opening for the roof replacement at one-ten West King Street.
Yes, sir. As Council Vice President Doak and Hour mentioned, your ten o'clock bid opening is for the roof replacement at one-ten West King Street, which the council has identified as being the potential future home of the Berkeley County Heritage Museum. This is bids for the removal and replacement of the existing flat roof. We've asked for bids for a twenty-year roof, a thirty-year warranty roof, and time and materials per sheet to replace the existing decking, if any needs to be replaced. We did conduct, had asbestos testing conducted by Winchester Environmental, which was done on June fifth, twenty twenty-three. There was no asbestos detected anywhere on the roof, including the four samples that were taken by Winchester Environmental. We do have the written report on file. We had two old air conditioner units on the roof, which was removed by crane yesterday on Wednesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. So they would not, that would not be part of the bid we do open today. As I said, the core testing on the existing roof indicates that the decking, decking is metal and not wood. The RFP was distributed to a roofing contractors placed on the county website and social media platforms. We also advertised in the Mark Turk Journal on Tuesday, May ninth, twenty twenty-three. We do have certification publication found in your packet. We did conduct a mandatory pre-bid conference on Wednesday, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. We had seven contractors attend that mandatory pre-bid. At the conclusion of the administrative portion of the pre-bid that was, that was done in this room, all the participants were taken to one-ten West King Street and given the opportunity to get up on the roof for inspection and measurements. As a result of that inspection and some subsequent questions that were, that were raised, we did issue four addendums to the original RFP. Bids were due no later than four o'clock PM on Wednesday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and we did receive three bids prior to the deadline. Just as a reminder to the council, we did receive a seventy thousand dollar grant from the West Virginia Commission on Art specific to the roof replacement. So once the bid award, once the council awards a bid, then we'll have to send it to the West Virginia Commission on Art for their review, but I don't anticipate any issues. So there are the three bids.
Okay, first, first bid was ABC Supply Company. ABC Supply Company. Unless there's something.
I was going to say, they went on to participate.
Missing here.
This is part of the, it's black stone. It's black stone roofing. Yeah, that's the product.
Okay. Say it seemed a little light.
Yeah, it's black stone roofing, and then there's the, the bids.
Okay, thank you. The twenty-year warranty is a hundred and eleven thousand, and the thirty-year warranty is a hundred and twenty-four thousand, and Penny, that's Blackstone Roofing LLC. The next bid is from Hydler Roofing Services. For a twenty-year roof is one hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-eight, and the thirty-year roof is a hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. Plus one hundred dollars per man-hour. If additional work is required, assuming that's what it is. This is High Point, this is High Point Roofing out of Hedgesville with a twenty-year warranty of seventy-two thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and forty-two cents. And they were not given specific details for a thirty-year roof, but for the twenty-year roof is a seventy-two thousand, three hundred and nine dollars.
All right, should make it do a thirty-year roof. Obviously, a lot cheaper, yeah, buddy?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Just a matter of whatever rubber you purchase.
Whatever meets the road, you know?
Right.
We'll try to bring a recommendation in within the next two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have, wait to go back and ask him for a thirty-year bid?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I asked to have the Nests' Quarry Road complaints put on our agenda. You know, last year, uh, the folks in the neighborhood complained about the noise and the dust. And, uh, nearly every agency in the county, uh, tried to work and solve this problem and we weren't successful at being able to do that. Now, some things were corrected, straightened out, fixed, whatnot, but the issue still exists this year. The sheriff, uh, councilman Catholic, myself, the prosecutor, a couple of his deputies, uh, met with folks down that way, uh, in the early part of, I guess it was late, late part of spring, to be able to understand their concerns. So a lot of work's been done there, but the problem still exists. And, you know, we looked at trying to create an ordinance to be able to address it. And we already have a noise ordinance, which the sheriff's office has been down there and measured the noises. The dust is a little bit more complicated. Uh, so yesterday I contacted, uh, West Virginia DEP and got a call back from the local gentleman that's in charge of air quality. And he has asked that additional information be sent to him. DEP was there in the past, but did not really address, uh, dust in particular. They were more looking at runoff and of course, our stormwater management people have been there. Our building inspectors folks have been there, the health department has been there, law enforcement's been there.
Animal control?
Uh, animal control, yes, have been there.
Cause I knew there's stories about farm animals.
Yes, yeah. Uh, obviously, uh, a lot of those emails, uh, Anthony has handled back and forth with, uh, the folks complaining. And, uh, you just try to find some resolution where we're not violating people's rights, but yet the people on the other side of the street have a right to enjoy their properties. So it's a very fine line to be able to, uh, create an ordinance that can do that. But I, I do feel that, um, and I'm going to ask Anthony to please, uh, I will give you the information, the name of the email, uh, to gather that info, as much information as we can provide, uh, the gentleman from the West Virginia DEP, provide him that information and see what he can do to correct some of the dust issues that have been, uh, you know, addressed to us. So, all right. So. This year's been a good year for dust, to say the least. There hasn't been much help from nature. Well, and he said there's, you know, several things that, you know, cause he asked me, he said, is the dust leaving the property? I answered, yes, it is. He said, well, then, you know, we can address that. And it's, you know, it's something perhaps as simple as a water truck being used on the property to keep the dust down. Uh, he mentioned about planting of trees. I thought, well, that'd take a couple of years for that to be effective, you know? So, uh, but at least, you know, it seemed like we are going to be able to get a little bit of help, even with everything that we've already done. I don't know if Anthony or the sheriff, either one of you want to address this. You're certainly welcome to, or you don't need to.
Certainly, I'm. So for a couple of years now, we've received complaints and depending on what the residents who are annoyed, unable to use their vans or their roofs, should be able to, what their goals are, it, it depends on, then you have to figure out how to get there. So if their goals are to just camp down dust, something, we've contacted. Um, we've gone out and done just about every enforcement action we could. I've contacted the state tax department to make sure that the guy had a business license. First he didn't, now he does. We contacted the, uh, health department because they were slaughtering and serving, uh, food out there without a permit. Now they're not serving food, or if they are, the health department's out there making sure they're compliant. So most of the regulatory thing of just to make sure they're compliant. This council doesn't have the authority to just go in and say, that's not, you can't use this site for this purpose. We don't have zoning, we don't have broad nuisance to where this is a nuisance to the public. It might be a nuisance to neighbors to the site and it would be the easiest way for them is to go to court to get a judge to say, hey, you're interfering with these, your neighbor's right to enjoy their property. But that is a private nuisance action. And I don't believe they've done that. We can continue having the sheriff go out there, enforce noise ordinance or ATV helmet usage if they're underage. I mean, that, that's some of the concerns I have is both for the residents across the street, but actually at the sites from some of the pictures, the activity I've seen is somebody might get hurt out there. And when the operator of that facility came in to my office to, well, to complain about people calling police on him, he said that he didn't even have any liability insurance. So we have people, we have minors going out there. They're supposed to have helmets on, they're not supposed to have people on the back of their ATV if they're using it. You can't be 14 and have a, somebody on the back of the ATV. And somebody is probably going to get hurt, but the county commission doesn't have much authority to make that. Sheriff's been out there enough many times, he can explain what they've done. We've got the building, engineering folks out there cleaned up. There was an open dump out there originally, DEP, it's warm water. And, uh, our folks were all out there, it's been cleaned up. But if it's the dust, the noise, use it. The ATVs, you can't just say, can't do that. It's kind of where we are and.
Um, so yeah, it's, uh, been a project for sure over the past year and a half. Um, I can tell you, uh, and included within an email I sent earlier, uh, from April 23rd to the month, throughout the month of May, we had at least 13 separate interactions with this property. Uh, Mr. Machado and the, uh, uh, folks that filed the complaints. These efforts have been hours of patrol requests for, um, surveillance, if you will. And noise complaints, responding to noise complaints, we've written citations for stuff as far as illegal burns. So it's, it's, uh, it's definitely a a convoluted issue as the council president said, it's, you know, how do you, how do you enforce the law? Uh, without tromping on someone's constitutional rights, so. Um, where there are two more avenues that we are pursuing, I can't go into detail with that now, but we are pursuing them. I think they will be effective. I can tell the council that I've personally called, uh, Mr. Carlos, the landowner, twice, left a message, uh, to his, uh, female counterpart once and, uh, still haven't returned a phone call to our office. So I take that as a sign of neglect and I'm going to hold him personally responsible with, uh, the next coming efforts that we do.
Thanks, Sheriff. My, my question to you, Anthony, is this, um, have, have you had any contact with the landowner yourself?
I have.
Okay.
That was last year.
Yeah. And here's my take, if, if the people there don't have any liability insurance, the way I understand it, and someone were seriously injured or killed, wouldn't that fall back on the property owner? I would think it would, and I think that's the message we need to proceed with him to say, look.
I talked to him about that, okay? Well, without getting too deep into it, usually for a residential liability policy, it wouldn't cover if you start up an enough business that had patrons. So the insurance coverage issue might not be, but he might still personally be liable. And I've told him that and I couldn't get a straight answer about whether he gets a cut out of any of this. He's getting proceeds from it. He said the guy doesn't pay rent because they're paying. So I'm unclear on, on that relationship. He's from somewhere in Kenya. He said, yeah, he was upset with all the calls, stuff going on out there, but I couldn't, I couldn't really get out of him what he gets out of it. I mean, he spent a good bit of money on his property, he's clearly getting something. I asked if there's a written lease, he said no. So I don't know. I think he's probably involved with the actual business operation, but there's no LLC or company form. It's just Mr. Machado is a sole proprietor. Charging for a number of activities. I don't think they've filed any, they didn't say any tax returns yet, but they are now registered.
They are paying their county taxes, I assume.
Well, that's something we're.
Checking on.
Well, initially I thought that it might be, uh, taxed as class two, but it is class three property. I think part of it is farm use because of the funding that was out there. There's an issue to personal property and one that's going to force you to pass.
Okay. Could you reach out to him again? Could you try to reach out to him again?
Your honor?
Yes. And ask him to please contact the sheriff as well, if you make contact.
I didn't know that he was willing to share. He was one of the ones to share.
Well, I mean, one, one thing that. It's a little easier when you live out of state doors. You know, just, just want people to realize that, that there is work that's being done. It's, it's never stopped. We haven't, not yet been able to solve all their issues, but we haven't stopped trying to.
Correct. And less reactions will help alleviate some of their concerns, but I believe the number of the residents there, once the whole operation's shut down, something cannot be. They would have to go to the quarter.
Okay, well, I'm hoping that the gentleman from, um, air quality with DEP will be able to, um, help out a little bit. So, thank you for that, all right? Okay, next up, uh, Tommy Puffenberger, candidate for Berkeley County Fire Service Board. Good morning, sir.
Morning.
Tommy, uh, you know, keep this very informal and just, you know, tell us a little bit. We know, we know about you a good bit, uh, at least most of us do, but.
It's both, you know that.
Tell us, tell us why you want to serve on the, on the fire board.
Just to represent our fire department, yes, in the main reason. Been a member of the fire department for 49 years, most founding members of the Packard Valley Fire Department. I'm one of the founding members, Scott, the fire board started from association. I did serve on the fire board for a few years, chairman for a couple of years. I've seen some things, the way the original setup was, it's not, when that away, I think it's a different way.
Okay. Mr. Barnhart, uh, have any questions for Tommy?
Well, not really, I'm glad to see you again, Tom. Looks like you lost a little weight.
I've lost a little weight, just 90 pounds.
Really? Good for you. Glad to see you're still active in the fire department and wherever else you're active at.
Well, that's, that's been kind of curved since the murder day.
Yeah. I have real new questions for Mr..
Tommy, you sit down a few ways.
I'm, I'm fine.
Okay.
I gotta get my exercise in and this is one of the things.
Okay.
Stand up, my neck will.
We might make you do a couple of jumping jacks in. Are you related to Dave?
Cousin.
First cousin?
Yeah.
Yeah. Virgil was your uncle, I guess. You know this place pretty well, I know that. I've always had a great respect for Tommy and what he did here for the county all those years. I, I don't have any questions, I think he would represent our community for the right reasons, I knew that. Tommy, I'm sure you're aware that every volunteer fire department in this county has asked for staffing. And if financially secure, would you support that funds from the fire board to help pay for staffing?
I would have to give that some good thought. I think that I wouldn't. Would want to look figures and give some good thought before I actually made a comment on that. I'm not one to make a opinion off the top of my head, I like to think about it a little bit.
Sure.
I can see where it would be beneficial to the community itself, because I know our volunteers have dropped off and served. And I'm one of those dropped off because I'm able to do what I used to do.
That's right.
But I would consider, I would want to see all the, all the information and everything before I make that decision.
Fair enough, thank you. Is there anything else you want to add?
No, sir, I just thank you for the opportunity to be considered.
Thank you, Tommy. All right, well, unless anybody else has anything, uh, Tommy, thanks for coming in, good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you.
Hope your health continues to improve. It will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, we're a couple of minutes ahead, but Penny, you ready for us to go on break? You okay with it? All right, we'll be in recess.
All right, we're back in session and next on the agenda is John Chapman, candidate for the Berkeley County Fire Service Board. Morning, John.
Morning.
Just a very informal question and answer and just tell us a little bit about yourself and then we'll have a few questions and we'll go from there, so.
I'm a resident of Berkeley County, been on the life, lived in Back Creek Valley thirty-eight years, thirty-eight years a member of Back Creek Valley Fire Department. Worked for the Ward Department here in County.
Okay, Mr. Barnhart.
As a member of the fire board, what's your position on the fire board? I mean, what do you think about the fire board? What do you want the fire board to do, you know?
I've never, I've never had the opportunity to serve. I thi- I think it would be very interesting. Heard a lot of talk of my dad, rest his soul, he used to serve on the fire board. Now she goes, listen to some of his comments and stuff, yes, I've, we've got to go places. We need some staffing, I don't know, I don't know how that's going to come, but we need some staffing, we need some help, so.
Does Back Creek Valley need to expand its building or anything, or?
Yes, sir, we do, yes, sir, we do.
Because that's, that would be a function of the fire board, really.
Yes, sir. I think to have more staffing, we have to have facilities overnight.
Yeah, there's always expanding the facility if you don't have people to.
Correct.
Sit there and man the, man the fire trucks.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kelly.
I just, I really don't, it seems to me that with the fire boards right now, our need is paint firefighters. I just wanted to know what your feeling was on that.
I will not deny the fact that we do not need more staffing whatsoever. As far as with the fire board, I don't know all the ins and outs about that, I don't know how that works. I don't know if there's a plan, a strategic plan, I'm not sure, but I would be sure I risked the help with it if I could.
Yeah, well, if we were to, if the community were to decide in the future to, to pay more in fire fees, would you support some of that money going towards paid firefighters?
I'm not sure, again, I'm not sure how that works. I think some wordage had changed some time ago, correct me if I'm wrong, the fire board can use fees, pay for staffing.
Contract, yes.
So, again, I'd have to look at that, sir.
Mm-hmm. That's all I have, I mean, you've been around a long time and obviously know what's going on particularly in that area, so. I don't have any other questions, thank you for willing, be willing to serve, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Johnny, have you held any leadership positions at Back Creek?
Yes, sir, I've been president, past president, board director, been a fire line officer, still a board director, on truck committees.
Good, that's what I want to get to, just, just to be, I want to be, hear you say that, you know, that I know you've been involved, so that's why, I just want to give you that opportunity. And what particular skill set do you think you could bring to the table with the fire board? You know, the fire board basically receives the funding and pays the bills, you know, so what, what particular skill set do you think you could bring there?
A script now, I don't know that I have a particular, particular skill set, I'm just pretty hope to find it. I like to run things the way they're supposed to be run. I would really, I would really do it, be able to help.
Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add that we haven't touched on?
Down there.
Okay, well, thank you for your time and your consideration.
What are these guys, are they applying for one position?
Yes.
Is this position to be appointed by us or the fire departments, or?
It's, it's Back Creek's term to have representation on the fire board and Back Creek has submitted four names, I think, to serve on the fire board and then we will make that appointment.
Just wanted to make it clear.
Yes, sir.
What's going on.
Very good, thank you, John.
Thank you all, thank you.
Next up, Philip Petrie, also a candidate for Berkeley County Fire Service Board. Philip, come up and tell us a little bit about yourself, if you would please, and why you want to serve on this board.
I've been a resident of Berkeley County for thirty-one years, I've grown up in this county, I've seen the growth, I originally grew up in Inwood, moved to Back Creek Valley, I've been a member of Back Creek since I was sixteen, been president of the department for the past five years, currently was a board director for about four years. I see the growth everywhere, just for the simple fact that I work for my father's construction company, we're constantly adding to homes in the valley. I see the ins and outs of the daily growth and the struggle that we have to, you know, maintain a staff department throughout the county. If you look at, look at the amount of calls that are scratched through each department, you know, I'm, I'm for and against some things, more or less, I just want to be able, I mean, my father, my father served on the fire board for a couple of years, several years, I was represented for Back Creek, so I know a little bit of the ins and outs of how it works, not, not entirely all of it to an extent, I'm just want to take the opportunity to try and further better myself and purchase opportunities, if that's mine.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnhart. Well, you heard our discussion with Mr. Chapman, so you got kind of a clue as to, to what we asked.
Yes, sir.
So, you have any plans, if you're a member of the fire board, to what you want to do as a member of the fire board?
I want to see that money is not misused, that is, you know, used for justified reasons. I know there's several, several departments, you know, us included, that misuse money on certain things that don't need to be wasted.
Well, the next big project would be Bennington.
Yes, sir.
Have any thoughts about that?
Um, they're, they're definitely, you know, I've, I've been inside their department in their main station.
Real cramped, real cramped.
It's tight and it is, they definitely, you know, as, as far as we're concerned, as far as like Back Creek, if we, our plan is to add on, add on another bay and just close in an existing bay and make the facilities necessary that we need to do, you know, to be able to retain twenty-four seven staff. So, we're not, we're not even looking at the aspect of even wanting to replace our station at all.
Well, you've got plenty of ground out there, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
That, that's one of Bennington's problems, they don't have the space.
Yeah, that's, it's kind of similar to us, we don't, we can't, we have to watch about how we go about where we're adding on at with, with where our land lays, but they're definitely, they're definitely in need of a new station, just for the simple fact they're, they're kind of more or less along the way that Hedgesville was where they was, you know, they're expanding and they're, they're getting to the point that that station is all apart.
Yeah, it's got some years on it.
Yes, it does.
Nineteen sixty-three, really.
Say, I know it was just prior to ours being built, somewhere close about ten years, so.
Mr. Kelly.
Again, you think the number one need is staffing and if you consider if you were on the fire board, potentially funds from that fee going toward the paid staff.
As long, my, my thing is I want to be able to also help, you know, I'd like to still help the volunteer departments. I wouldn't necessarily say that all the money goes to paid staffing.
I didn't mean it that way, no. If there's a increase in future fees is what I'm saying, because now the fire board is bringing in about two and a half million dollars a year, just the fire fees existing right now, so, which is a substantial amount of money to address the buildings and equipment needs.
Is there, do you happen to know, Dr. Head, what the percentage might be if they're trying to increase it?
Well, we're talking about just the increase in not on the residential side, but the non-residential side.
Yeah.
If it add, I guess one point five, yeah, another one point five million, so.
I'm, I'm not against it, going to, because like I said, we're, we're at a point now, I mean, in, in my department, there's six actively, we run the calls all the time, there's six on the staff.
And it's just not, you know, we have to do what's best for the community out there. You can have all the trucks and buildings in the world, but if you don't have somebody to get us there, we're in trouble.
I'm not against it, that was one of our big pushes when the Amsoil re-purchased, about putting a medic and an EMT back there, so five days a week, I mean, they've approached us, want to go twenty-four seven back there just because of location and how many calls we receive, you know, they did a demographic of, you know, call volumes, that's why they changed it from nine AM to nine PM. That's one of the things I want to represent, you know, the county as far as, you know, I've grown up in, I know the need, you know, I'm not one that wants to purposely spend money, you know, kind of, kind of double edged sword, I want to be able to see what money's going out, what money's coming in, you know, if it's a need that we have to have, then by all means do it, but if it's something that we don't need it exactly right now, that we can wait, you know, a year or two to get it and wait to get it and build up money to do it.
But you guys, as well as the other four stations that don't have twenty-four seven, have asked the county for twenty-four seven coverage, so I assume that you support that for sure. That's all I have.
Okay, I think you mentioned this earlier, Philip, but just, just tell me again about your leadership role at Back Creek.
I started out as junior member when I was sixteen, turned eighteen, I got my fire one and everything, I've been a career driver on all the units for probably the past six years at least, I was board member for approximately, I want to say, six years. Our president became chief, we had a vote, I became president, I've been president ever since.
How far do you live from your fire?
I live a mile. Yeah, I'm, I'm probably, I'm, well, myself and my father just focused on this department, oh, you're a great guy.
Is there a particular skill set that, that if you sit on that board that you'd like to hone in, everybody's got their own niche kind of a deal.
I wouldn't say I have a niche per se, like I said, I'm very, I'm very conscientious about spending, just from being around with my father being chief through all his years, my mother being treasurer of the department, I see what, you know, how he was with spending money on certain things, you know, we, we ask him a million times, you know, let's get this, let's get that, and he's like, no, no, we, we don't really need it right now. Looking back at now, I'm sitting in the position of president, I see where I was one of the members that was like, oh, we need this, we need that, and I'm constantly looking at numbers, and it's like, oh, we can do without this, we can save money here by doing this, and, you know, we do a lot of, I do a lot of nitpicking, brow beating to some of the members about spending money, but I just, I want to try and further my experience in a place that I've not been, I served as an alternate for the fire association under Chris Humphrey, went to a couple of those meetings, so I know about what goes on there, and then, like I said, my dad served on the fire board, and I'd like to give it a shot and see how, see how it turns out.
Very good, well, Philip, thanks for coming in and, I know it took us a couple of times to work it all out, but appreciate you coming in and.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next on the agenda is Mr. Gary Wine.
Who?
Only.
You look familiar, you know.
Do you?
The bid recommendation before the office furniture. So, as you're all intimately aware, the building renovation construction project is well underway, this will be our second round, the furniture purchases, the first round did not exceed fifteen thousand, so we didn't bid it, and that's the furniture we have prepared for the tax office meeting. The next.
Just for correction, we did get quoted.
Correct, we just didn't bid.
I just don't want anybody to see this thinking.
We followed normal purchasing procedures, it didn't exceed fifteen thousand, so we just did quotes, thank you, boss. The, this, the second purchase, this won't be the last, we have many other phases to go, for phase one, this would be the voter registration and IT department, everything needed for the furniture in both places. You, you opened the bids on June first and you had five companies respond, of those, the low bid laborers out of Hagerstown at one hundred three thousand, six hundred four dollars and eighty-three cents, it's been reviewed by Tracy, myself, as well as Kevin Whitney from Crafty and Roden, also meets all specifications, it's within the budget for furniture in the project, we're just asking that the council award it to the low leader.
Is the quality there?
It is, it is, when the specifications were written, they're not written to the highest level, the standards are also, also not written to the lowest, just average grade that everyone else has in their office, nothing special, nothing cheap.
Well, I know that that company's been around for quite a while.
Right.
They've been in Hagerstown for a long time, and then they expanded, over the last few years, they've expanded, it used to be downtown.
Yeah, how about that?
Yeah.
So, the sheriff's department has made some purchases from them over the year, this will be our first interaction with them on a big purchase, I can tell you, Tracy's excited to do it, we've had some struggles with some vendors in the past, so we're anxious to see how this works if the council chooses to move forward.
Tracy's right behind you, there's a finger.
It's in the budget, so I'm ready to make a motion if you want to.
Yes, sir, I'd have a motion to.
Accept the low bid for the furniture.
Labor's office.
Yep.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
And this is all parties of ARPA funding that you had set aside for this project.
Good. Uh, next thing, Mr. Wine, is the day report, construction contract. So as you're all aware, um, the bids have been received, um, the bonds were sold, the project's moving forward, and you, you actually awarded, uh, the bid to Waynesboro Construction.
What, was that Alan, two weeks ago, two thirties ago? Two or three.
Um, either way, the, the, the contract, the construction contract has been submitted through Anthony's department for our legal efforts, uh, Crabtree has ensured that all of the costing points in the contract are correct, so this is just to ask for the council to authorize the vice president to sign the contract and we can ju, get shovels turning. It's for five million, five hundred seventy-two dollars, five hundred, uh, million, five hundred seventy-two thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars.
When you say shovels turning, do you have a date?
We have a onsite construction meeting next, Wednesday afternoon, so no idea, my guess is pretty soon.
Yeah.
Waynesboro Construction is the, the vendor whom is doing the renovations at City Hall, uh, Alan has talked to the president and he did make mention that they're intimate with the process and procedures inside the.
I talked to Greg Brown, who's president of Waynesboro Construction, um, they are intimately familiar with all the requirements for West Virginia and the city of Martinsburg.
I guess they would.
Um, and since they've already mobilized, uh, and, and, you know, I go back and forth a lot, one, one eighty-one, it's hardly a day goes by, I'm not seeing a Waynesboro construction vehicle going either north or south, so, um, his thought was, since they're mobilized, they're, I think they're intent is to get on it sooner rather than later pretty quick.
Well, I guess them working on City Hall has really no bearing on day report center because it'd be different crews.
Yeah, that, that, we had expectations, set expectations for, for finishing the contract, and they're committed to that, so there's no concern.
Yeah.
Uh, probably can report a better date and time on true dirt moving early July.
Yeah.
We could phone home to Alan and see what he's going through.
Give them a shovel, same matter.
I'm willing to work for E and B, I'll already be on site.
Yeah.
So we, we just need approval for the vice president to sign the construction contract.
Do you need a motion?
Please, sir.
Um, so move.
Second.
With the approval, with the ability of the vice president to sign the documents.
I second it. Mr. Waynesboro Construction.
Waynesboro Construction for five million, five hundred seventy-two thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars.
Yes, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I was having.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda is Mr. Delegati, our legal director, setting of the regional meeting for the West Virginia First Foundation.
So as the council is aware, um, there have been a number of opioid settlements statewide and in that framework, um, about seventy-five percent of the dollars, seventy-four and a half, seventy-two and a half, something around that, is going to a statewide nonprofit foundation, and the largest county in each of the DHH arteries, regions for the West Virginia First Foundation, has to convene a meeting within sixty days of filing their articles of incorporation. The deadline for that, I think, is July seventeenth. Meeting will have to include, will send out notice to twenty-seven political subdivisions in the region.
That includes Hampshire, Hardy, Noggin, Pendleton, Hampshire, Hardy, Grant, Mineral, Morgan, Burke, and Jefferson.
Got them all there. Uh, and then a number of them have some small municipalities. The only item on the agenda is, has to be on the agenda is picking a regional director. Each political subdivision should select one representative to go, so that's one thing you should do here today is pick a representative to go, and then also we need to set a date and time. With the seventeenth being the last day, um, the week before, the council's got public hearings on subdivision, so it's probably not that day. Um, and if you had, I, I talked to Councilman Gogonier, he thought he was thinking maybe twelfth and one o'clock that Wednesday. So after the council sets this, we'll put out notice of this meeting, send it by mail to all twenty-seven, we'll email it to the commissioners, council members in the area, and we'll have the meeting here. Now, there's not a lot of guidance on the structure of the meeting, the attorney general office did send something out, but I would assume that since during the day we might want to prevent calling in, zooming in, because these small municipalities, for the distance of letting all the way out here, when they have very little vote share anyway, the vote share is determined based on, each, he's getting into the formula, the big counties and the big cities are the ones that actually have the vote share. Uh, I could work with Gary, get that, so.
Are they required to be here or encouraged?
They're not required to be here, um, but we have to send out notice.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not disputing that, I just wanted to be sure that they're not required to be, be in attendance in case, you know, Ridgely or, you know, some small town like that, Ordensville or, you know, doesn't show, has a bearing on it.
They, I assume that there will be a number of them that don't actually show up.
I would say, yeah.
Or just have a representative call in just to hear what's going on, they, there's, nobody really knows how the West Virginia First Foundation is going to work, it's three quarters of a billion dollars over ten years, so it's a lot of money, um, we need to make sure that things in this region are organized, maximize the dollars, use of those dollars to, they, they don't have a problem. So the meeting I would be chaired by the council representative here, I think we'll just have it in this, this room, um, and then pick a person, everybody would pick nominations and then have a vote on it, and that's the only thing that has to be done. If somebody else wants to bring up other issues or just talk generally about opioid that they're doing in their county, their municipality, I think it's probably a good opportunity to just have that discussion of other folks in the region. So it's up to you, if that date works, we'll send out notice.
Yeah, and I did not want to wait till the last day of the order, and that's why I asked Anthony to set it a week ahead in case something crazy happened that we would not be in violation of that order, so that's the reason that, that's a week ahead, so.
Do you want two motions or one?
Um.
One to set the date and one to appoint Eddie.
You can have a motion, really just consensus of the council, but you can have a motion.
Yeah.
It can be, it can be.
That we hold the, uh, meeting on July the twelfth, on a Wednesday, at one o'clock.
Here.
And here in the council chambers, and that Councilman Gogonier represents Berkeley County at that meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made, properly second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. And the, uh, county commissioners, it's County Commissioners Association is trying to set up some call with people from around the state prior to this meeting, I talked to her a couple of days ago, uh, just to make sure everybody's on the same page about what gets done. I'll jump on that call, but I think we're out ahead of it where some other places are.
So you'll put together an agenda?
Yes, so the, we'll have an agenda, the attorney general sent out a proposed agenda, we might just add, uh, other items or if anybody wants to bring up anything else.
And you'll, you'll mention that in, in your letter to, you email to all the.
Yes.
Municipalities, county commissioners.
And we'll try to get that out then, uh, that letter, 'cause I don't think we have all of the addresses. Counties we do, it's municipalities, some of the smaller ones, addresses, but I think we'll probably get those out next week.
Yeah, I, I would like for something to go to each individual, uh, municipality as well.
You think like the mayor or?
Mayor and/or city manager.
Yeah, most of, a lot of them don't have city managers, it'd be the mayor.
But Ben, it's our responsibility to set up the meeting, you know, I would not be in favor of just sending it to the county seat, uh, and then expect, and hoping that it got, so.
No, no, I agree. That's it.
If I have any other questions.
I don't have any other questions right now, I'm sure I will when we get a little closer, but thank you.
Sure, uh, next up, Mr. Davis, is the reformation of the county council to the county commission.
Yes, sir, uh, as the council is aware, um, on March the ninth, twenty twenty-three, as part of the twenty twenty-three regular session, Senate Bill six forty-nine was, was passed, uh, it becomes effective, or it became effective ninety days from its passage, which was June the eighth, twenty twenty-three. And, um, it was, as you know, intended to allow this, this council to change its name to Berkeley County Commission. Um, the bill states that the county council may, by a majority of the, of the council, adopt a resolution that solely changes its name back to the Berkeley County Commission. The resolution shall not constitute a reformation, alteration, or modification of the form of county government. The council upon changing its name shall retain its powers, duties, and responsibilities as the county commission has provided in the constitution and the general laws of this state. The change in the name of the council shall not affect or alter the number or terms of its members. It goes on to state that at least thirty days prior to consideration of this resolution, which is today, the council shall give notice of the proposed change by publication of the intent to change its name in each weekly or daily newspaper as a class two legal ad in compliance with West Virginia Code fifty-nine, I Street X one, which says essentially, um, at least thirty days before today, um, we had to run a legal notice twice, um, notifying the public of the proposed name change. We did run, uh, legal notices on Monday, May the first, twenty twenty-three, and Monday, May the eighth, twenty twenty-three. We do have certification publication on file, and the legal department, um, has provided you with a resolution changing the name of the Berkeley County Council back to the Berkeley County Commission, and I know from speaking to all five of the current council members that it's the consensus of all five of you that you want to make this change, so it's offered to you, um, for your discussion and adoption, if you so choose, you'll see that the resolution has an effective date of July first of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, gentlemen, uh, motion to adopt the resolution for the name change from Berkeley County Council to Berkeley County Commission. I need a motion.
Mr. President, pro temp, Mr. Vice President, whatever the heck you are, I move that we adopt the, uh, what's it, the resolution changing the name of the Berkeley County Council back to the Berkeley County Commission effective July one.
I second it, properly motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan, thank you, legislature.
We will have all, July first, you'll have all your name tags, we'll get with you as far as business cards and letterhead and, so all of that will be taken care of.
Any idea of the cost?
It, it's minimal. Um, if, in fact, in anticipation of this change, knowing what, knowing what the consensus of the council is, we already have your, your name tags and, uh, stationary, letterhead, things like that, it's, we, we don't pay much for that, so, um, Tracy would be glad to be able to get all that taken care of.
Very good, Mr. Davis, you have a state budget revision number twelve.
Just one thing, I'm.
Sorry.
Um, I know everybody keeps asking, when, when are you guys a council commissioner and whatnot, but I press it once and say until October. Every time somebody's on the radio, they're like, are you a commissioner or are you a councilperson?
We can have Matt do that next week when he comes back. The next and final matter for your open session, uh, is state budget revision number twelve. Um, for the current fiscal year, um, the state auditor's office, as you know, goes through the same process that we go through as far as closing out one fiscal year and, and starting another, and has, has set the deadline that for the last day to submit state budget revisions as today. Um, so this will be the final one for the current fiscal year, you can see at least on, um, at, at first glance, it appears like it's a, it's a big, um, state budget revision, uh, and as far as the dollar value, it's three million, six hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. However, you'll see that there are three big checks in there, um, one for two million, one seventy-one and two dollars from Wesbanko and two ARPA capital building reimbursement checks. The total of those three checks is three million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, thirty, thirty dollars. Um, this is the total reimbursement for the capital monies that we put into the LED lighting, and this building to date, we paid, we've been paying for it out of the general fund and reimbursing, or reimburse ourselves, we did go to bond closing, um, on June first, um, with the intent that we would reimburse ourselves, and you passed that resolution some time ago, so this now makes, uh, as of today, makes the general fund hold in what's owed, uh, to the capital building, which is important for purposes of your own income and fund balance. There is also a number of checks, um, for IT services totaling thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty dollars, but everything else, uh, af, after that was pretty, uh, pretty standard. I'm recommending that we put eight thousand dollars into the county council's retirement account. The state, um, that's been a couple of years ago now, Kenny, uh, the deputy retirement, um, deputy sheriff's retirement fund, we have to pay by ACH, but for whatever reason, we couldn't pay it out of the deputy retirement account, so we have to pay it out of our retirement account, out of four oh one, and then we have to reimburse ourselves, so, um, this makes sure that, um, your retirement account does not blow over, um, adjustments to fiduciaries, uh, salaries and benefits and contracted services, uh, your transportation, uh, division department, um, of the deputy court marshals, they're, they're running their, their back ends off, um, so as a result, we continue to put in some, some overtime, um, so there's a small deficit, uh, in overtime, so I'm recommending we put twenty thousand dollars in overtime to get them through, um, the, the rest of fiscal year, of course, this thirty-seven, five forty back to IT, uh, health insurance miscalculation, um, for building inspections, that was off a little bit. Um, as you know, our contributions to health insurance was increased this current fiscal year, and for whatever reason, um, that increase did not get into permits and inspections of Department four thirty-eight, um, we did have a payment for a fleet plane, uh, which goes back in central garage, uh, again, uh, salaries, employer, custodian, retirement, um, into the day report centers for some of our grant funded positions, uh, twenty-six thousand dollars in capital vehicles, again, really don't. Again, really don't think that's going to be needed, but put it in there just in case, um, we find a a vehicle sometimes. Uh, you know, we find a vehicle, we, I know we need one additional vehicle for, um, home confinement that Gary's looking for. Just putting that in there in case, um, we would find a vehicle between now and the end of fiscal year. And then you can see the lion's share of the reimbursement, three million, four hundred, eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars is going back into the capital buildings account, which had a pretty substantial deficit, which now, which now will make that whole. So it, the fiscal year ended kind of as we were, we we hoped it would.
You're pretty close, huh?
We're, we're pretty close.
Good job. But it really didn't, it really didn't surprise me because you you've been on top of this, uh, budget, you know, right from right from the beginning, and your estimates have been very, very close, uh, revenue estimates. You know, yeah, I thank, you know, all the department heads for for staying, keeping their budgets in line. And I know we had some issues with the sheriffs over time. Uh, but other than that, really and truly, everybody's managed their accounts well.
Has worked together very hard, you know, to keep their budgets under control.
Okay, need a motion to approve the state budget revision number twelve for Fund zero zero one.
I, uh, make a motion to approve the state budget revision number twelve, Fa- Fund zero zero one.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thank you.
Penny, I know you you can get on these right away, but we need to have this one in today to the auditor's office.
Is there any need for executive session?
You need anything? No, sir.
Mr. Barnhart, I'm sorry, I just want the public.
Steve, you have anything?
Mr. Prenton, we're in recess.
We are in recess. Thank you.